Are we all ready?
Mm-hmm.
Sir.
All right. Good afternoon. The Jackson Public School Board Meeting is now called to order. Board members, we have a, we have five members in person, one on the line, and one on the way. So we have a quorum. We have all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been moved by Dr. Luckett, it has been seconded by Ms. Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And amazed, the motion is approved. Before we go on to the minutes, I just, I did want to alert the public that, in terms of our agenda. So we have the board meeting first. We will adjourn the board meeting, however, after the board meeting, we have a work session, which is also a public meeting. So I just wanted to know for anyone interested in turning into the work session, is the work session around our comprehensive land use study, you are welcome to stay tuned. There will not, well, I don't know how it will work logistically, but I assume it'll be on this channel. Is that, I'm just looking at the com scopes. Okay, great. So again, just wanted to make that announcement at the outset. So with that, we have all had an opportunity to review the minutes as outlined. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes as presented?
I so moved.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Ms. Johnson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, there being none, the motion is approved. And like that, we're on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Green.
Thank you, Dr. Sevak, board members, to all of our JPS administrators, and team members, and scholars, and parents, and community members. Thanks, everyone, for joining us this evening. We'll begin, as we typically do, with the latest news from around JPS, from the instructional television team. Oh, yeah, I saw that.
Local philanthropist and musician Antoine Perkins keeps the music on key for JPS students. The artist recently donated two instruments to students at Callaway High School. In addition to the Callaway gift, Perkins also donated instruments valued at $3,000 to Jim Hill, Lanier, and Merah High Schools. Mr. Perkins is establishing the Antoine Perkins Foundation, an organization that will provide scholarship opportunities for underprivileged music and art students in Mississippi. Lanier High School has retired the jersey of Monte Ellis. The retirement ceremony honored the former Lanier Bulldogs' achievements and his stellar career with the NBA. After being selected by the Golden State Warriors during the NBA draft in 2005, Ellis, who was then a student at Lanier, entered the NBA straight out of high school. During his time with the Warriors, Ellis was named the NBA's Most Improved Player, as well as one of the best scorers in the league, averaging close to 25 points per game on two occasions. After six and a half seasons with Golden State, Ellis was traded to the Milwaukee Bucks. The former Lanier standout also played with the Dallas Mavericks and with the Indiana Pacers. The ceremony was held at Lanier High School. Mississippi Professional Educators has awarded three JPS teachers with classroom grants. The awards are designed to enhance their students' instruction and educational experience. The recipients are Stacy Jewels Dunn, a kindergarten teacher at Oak Forest Elementary, Susan Bender, a 10th through 12th grade science teacher at Jim Hill High School, and Christopher Little, a music teacher at Jim Hill High School. MPE is a statewide professional association with approximately 13,500 members. Ten music instructors from Jackson Public Schools have completed certification levels I, II, or III, and a master class of the American Orf showwork for music educators. The distinguished music leaders are Dr. Dennis McGlynn, Galway Elementary, Noreen Wallace, Blackburn Middle School, Cassandra Watkins, Isabel Elementary, Laura Womack, Van Winkle Elementary, Torres Bell, Baker Elementary, Gwanda Brooks, Marshall Elementary, Portia Collier, MacLeod Elementary, Reagan Jackson, Wilkins Elementary, Christopher Little, Jim Hill High School, and Cortina Mahomes of Sykes Elementary. Ask for more, celebrated ten outstanding educators from the Jackson Public School District as well. They are Regina Carpenter, Smith Elementary, Latoya Cooper, JPS Tubul Early College High School, Christopher Evans, Callaway High School, Sheila Gibson, Boyd Elementary, Tassithia Knotts, Bates Elementary, Christopher Little, Jim Hill High School, Cortina Mahomes, Sykes Elementary, Shanita McDonald, Galway Elementary, Rhonda Moses, Marshall Elementary, and Candice Taylor, Brinkley Middle School. The award is made possible each year by a generous donor who prefers to remain anonymous. The funds may be used for professional or personal purposes. The district's official mobile app is now available. Get access to news, the district's directory, and much more. Download it on Google Play and from the Apple App Store. Search for Jackson Public Schools MS. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at www.jackson.k12.ms.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools, and on Twitter at JPS District. You can also watch all JPS programming on our YouTube page at JPS ITV, and on our Comcast channels 18 and 19.
Thank you, team members, for producing that video for us, and keeping us updated as to what's happening in our district. As many of you are aware, the city of Jackson has experienced some low water pressure for the last two days, affecting several school districts, or schools in the district. And as a result, our team has had to pivot to virtual learning for those impacted scholars. I want to thank our team members, Team JPS, for demonstrating excellence as they quickly mobilized to maintain, excuse me, to maintain instruction. Also want to thank, relatedly, want to thank the Environmental Protection Agency Administrator Michael S. Regan for meeting with us and visiting Wilkins Elementary School during his Journey to Justice Tour, which was kicked off here in Jackson. Administrator Regan was able to witness the challenges caused by the water issues here in our city, and to hear directly from our team members and scholars about their experiences. In addition to the focus on our water pressure, and flooding, and water quality issues here in the city, we talked with Administrator about opportunities related to our 16th section properties, highlighting Lake Heiko in particular, as well as our environmental learning center and some of the opportunities there. I was encouraged by his visit, and certainly look forward to building a meaningful partnership with the Administrator and with his team to positively impact the lives of all Jackson residents, and most especially, the lives of our scholars. So do want to shout out the Administrator and all those who helped to make his visit happen. Board members, as you know, we recently took our first benchmark assessment for the school year. These common assessments provide our teachers and other educators, scholars, and parents with the data that they need to hone in on the specific skills and concepts that our scholars have yet to master. Dr. Latoya Blackshear, the Director of Planning and Evaluation, will now join us to share the results from the 2021 Benchmark Assessment I.
Good evening, Board President Dr. Sevak, Vice President, Board Members, and Superintendent Green. Tonight, I have the pleasure of sharing with you benchmark assessments updates. And as always, we like to begin all of our presentations, we'll remind you of our vision, mission, and our core values. At Jackson Public School, we prepare scholars to achieve globally, to contribute locally, and to be fulfilled individually. At Jackson Public School, we develop scholars through world-class learning experience to obtain an exceptional knowledge base, critical and relevant skill sets, and a necessary disposition for our great success. Our core values. At Jackson Public School, we believe in the importance of equity, excellence, growth mindset, relationship, relevance, and positive and respectful culture. And you see the core values that we're going to really lift, highlight it in tonight's The purpose of this presentation is discuss where we are in terms of proficiency, discuss probable strengths and opportunities of growth, as well as outline next steps based on data. And as a reminder, we administer the benchmark assessment three to four times a year. We use the data to determine our teachers and our scholars' strengths, as well as opportunities of growth. And we also use the data to make course corrections throughout the year before our benchmark, before our math assessment. So our first couple of slides represents where we are in terms of proficiency. And when we say proficiency, we're talking about levels IV and V. There are two ways we could really look at this data. We can look at it by cohort, but tonight, we're going to look at it from year to year. So as you can see, we average, or we arrange for proficiency, we range from 13 to 25, a little over 25 percent. We saw a slight decrease in all of the areas for ELA and all grade levels, except for our eighth grade ELA. So for our math proficiency, we'll start off with our elementary division. You'll see our proficiency, again, range from 16 percent to 18 percent, a little over. Again, you see just a slight little decrease from last year to this year's benchmark. Our middle school data, our eighth grade increased to 16.5 percent. All others showed a slight decrease. Our science proficiency, you'll see a increase, again, in our eighth grade science. Our eighth grade was consistent with their increase, and we had a slight decrease in our fifth grade science. High school proficiency. So in our high school proficiency, we saw an increase in all of our subject area courses, except for US History and English I. As always, our goal is to move all of our scholars towards proficiency and or maintain proficiency. So we wanted to take a closer look at our subgroup data. So on the next couple of slides, about four slides, you'll actually see what we're looking at, English, math, science, but we're looking at them relatively to all of our learners, our EL, our SPED, we're looking at it gifted, as well as our program schools. Please note, we want all of our proficiency. We want, of course, we want all of our proficiency to be higher, but note, our EL relatively to all of our learners. We've noticed that our EL learners are definitely utilizing some strategies that will benefit all of our learners. And here you see your, our US History proficiency, all learners sitting at, right at, a little over 23 percent proficient, and of course, all others. Our science proficiency, again, note our EL. Our EL is sitting at 35 percent, and as you know, that our math and our science is a universal language. It focuses a lot on steps, procedures, vocabulary, Latin root word, and that's what our strength of our EL learners. So again, all of our learners could definitely benefit from those strategies and skills. So the next couple of slides, we wanted to take a closer look at our program schools. It's very important that we are enriching, providing enriching, so we could move them or maintain proficiency and/or move them to advanced, level V. So here, you'll see how we performed at our IB in grades III, IV, and V, ELA, math and Our IB for middle school, ELA, math and through, you know, math and science, and in grades VI through VIII grade. So again, we just wanted to make sure that we are pushing our students towards level V and maintaining. And of course, here, you actually see our high school data as well. Our APAC, Academic and Performing Art Complex, for our fourth and fifth grade students at Iowa B Wells, we're looking at English for our fourth grade, a little over 80 or 81 percent. Science is looking at 72, and of course, you have your math and ELA for grades IV and V there as well. The next slide, you actually see our middle school, how they are performing, our APAC. So again, sixth grade is at 40, a little over 41 percent. Seventh grade, English, a little over 60 percent, as well as our math, eighth grade math is sitting at about 40, a little over 44 percent, and so forth. And this is, of course, our APAC for high school. Now, we also want to make sure that we, the next few slides, will focus on our opportunities for growth. We noticed that our students perform fairly well on reading literature. However, our opportunities for growth, we saw a lot was our RI standards. Now, while I won't read all of the standards to you, we saw some common themes from third grade to grade eight for ELA. Some of their opportunities was asking and answer questions, having them to quote accurately from the text, or explaining what a quote means. And you'll see that in grades III through VIII grade. Seventh grade, one of our opportunities for growth focused on, actually determined the meaning of a word or phrases using our figurative language. So I want to do, we wanted to provide you with a sample of how the assessment item would look. So this question or this passage focused on "I love sugar." It's about us not eating or eating a lot of sugar, eating too much sugar, three types of simple sugar, and how the effects of sugar have on us as adults and our learners, our children. So the first question, number 20, as you'll notice, is a part B. So we noticed, again, our opportunities for growth were having our students to ask and answer a question or quote accurately from a text, and/or answering two-part questions. So you'll see, number 20 is a two-part question. It asks you, what question from the text best supports the answer to part A? Well, in order for me to really get this question right, I got to make sure that I get or answer question 19 correctly as well. So question 19 asked them to, what is the main idea of the body's battery section? Well, in this passage, they also have four subheadings. So it directly told our students to go back into that passage or to the section titled "The Body's Battery." However, our correct answer is A, but a lot of our students selected B, okay? The item analysis of distribution is not at the bottom, that's for 20, but I'm pointing out that a lot of them selected B. That was in the story, but it was not in the body's battery section. So we have to make sure that we're teaching our students how to use those test-taking strategies as well. So if I did not answer question 19 correctly, I'm more than likely going to answer question 20 incorrectly as well, okay? And then at the bottom, you actually see the distribution of scores. A lot of our children, or our scholars, excuse me, chose mostly A and B, okay? So our opportunities for growth for mathematics. So our third grade dealt with number patterns. As we spoke with teachers, they indicated that, you know what, we did not perform well on that standard, but it's because we didn't make it to that standard just yet. We ran out of time before testing. So as you, as we make it to the end, you'll see where we put in, included that as a next steps. For our fourth and fifth grade, we looked at it being place values, making sure that our students understand place value, because that is the foundation to all other. So example of our fourth grade math item, item that our students did not do, perform so well on, number 21, it asked, which digit could fill in the blank to make the number round to 9,860? If you look at the distribution of the answer choice, a lot of our students chose D, which is incorrect. Again, they didn't read the question and/or did they understand that they're asking to round to the nearest 10, okay? So for secondary mathematics, for sixth grade, we saw that it was mean, median mode. Our seventh grade was integers. Eighth grade was rational and irrational numbers. Domains and functions were high school and our middle school. And an example of an eighth grade secondary question here, this is a technology-enhanced question. It required our students to select more than one answer. So for this question, we asked teachers, teachers, our students, or when we spoke with our students, they say, well, we didn't know where the line go, instead of knowing that that's a bar notation. So they have to understand rational and irrational numbers and repeating decimals. And you'll see at the bottom, we had 51 percent of the students to answer it correct, and 0 percent to answer it, and 48 percent to earn zero points. And again, here, you actually see our science and history, opportunities for growth, okay? And then here is an eighth grade science. Okay? When speaking with teachers and our students, knowing, knowing actually the terminology, non-renewable resources, knowing that they're asking for two reasons, the and, what method and also reduce the environmental effect. And also, our students just didn't recognize that this was real-world application. They didn't know the effects of a car having on the pollution and in the air and all that. So that was a key takeaway for us, to make sure that we work with our students just on real-world application. And you also see the distribution of scores, A, B, and C, which indicated that our students just was unclear about their answer choice. On this slide, on the next two, three slides, you'll actually see where we identified our bottom, our top and our bottom 10 schools in terms of proficiency. Why do we do that? We want to make sure that our academic coaches, our Office of Teaching and Learning, we're deploying the supports, are providing the supports to the schools that need it. And we also want to make sure that we are networking with our other schools that are performing well. What are the teachers doing? What are the, what are they doing that we can kind of replicate in other schools? What strategies are they using? And then you'll see math here. And of course, science. Now, what are our next steps? We showed you all this data, what are the, what's the next steps? How are we going to move towards proficiency? Number one, we, we're going to focus on providing, continue to focus on providing professional development sessions, assisting students or schools with pacing calendars that align with their data to ensure students are prepared. When those teachers told us that they didn't make it to the standard, well, let's sit down, let's help you pace out the standards to ensure we're allowing the adequate amount of days and assist you with those strategies. We're assisting teachers on creating aligned assessments, knowing what a student should know and be able to do to answer this question or master the question. Again, we're looking at providing job-alike sessions for our teachers, and also, MBE has a number of resources that we could use to assist our students, our scholars, excuse me, where quoting accurately from the text. We noticed throughout the data that our EL, Exceptional Ed Department, are performing, it's a small gap in terms of all of our learners. So we're going to ensure that our exceptional education, our EL teachers are planning and attending professional development with the teachers. They're sharing those strategies, those ideas. Continue to provide enrichment activities for our gifted IB APAC students to increase proficiency level. Our assistant superintendents are coaching our building-level principals on how to identify the misconceptions during their fit meeting and misunderstanding during their fit meetings. So we're wanting our principals to take that information back to our teachers. We have developed a priority standard tracker that we're sharing with the Office of Teaching and Learning, our district academic coaches, to assist with identifying those standards that need a clean focus or where we need to target our professional development. And again, we've met with principals to revisit and or set our SMART goals. Our principals need to know where they are and where they want to be if we're going to see success at the end of the year. And last, but not least, we want to make sure that we're mimicking, we're administering assessments as if they were state assessment. Make sure our schedules are tight, our time disproctor is secure, we're making sure that we are providing test-taking strategies, just knowing what the item is asking our students. So just mimicking everything as if it was a state assessment. Any questions?
Excellent report.
Thank you.
So easy to understand.
I have one methods question, and then a strategy question. The first one was, the data comparison at the front end of the PowerPoint, was it benchmark to benchmark or benchmark to year-end?
So that was benchmark one of this year to benchmark one of last year.
Okay, that's, that's, that's helpful. And then you made a comment in your presentation about some of the strategies that were being used with our English-language learners that could then be used with other learners in the district or other students. Could you just share maybe the top one or two of those strategies that you've seen as having the most potential?
So for our EL learners, they're focusing heavily on the vocabulary, and that's one of the strategies we need to make sure that we are utilizing with all of our learners. And they're also using a significant way to kind of decode a word, to understand the word, and actually know what it means. And those are some of the two I can think of off the hand, but I could definitely yield to some of my wonderful colleagues, make it go extensively with it.
No, well, I said one to two.
Okay.
So that's, that's great, but I'd love to hear the others at another time or in another environment, but those are helpful. Thank you.
I have a question. I was noticing that in some of our special programs, the elementary has the highest number in terms of proficiency.
Yes, ma'am.
And then it starts to decline. Do we know why?
We know, I would definitely say we know the transition. Moving from elementary to middle, it is a big shift and a big adjustment. We also understand the fact that we are now fully vert, I mean, face-to-face as opposed to last year. We were all virtual, I think, up until January, I think. So we saw that kind of a shift.
Okay, so transitions and the...
And also the rigor. The standards have definitely changed.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, President, oops. Turner Johnson, as we continue to raise expectations, improve our practices, provide stronger materials to our scholars, you expect to see the greatest improvements early on and build from there as they get older with us. So as, as we continue our transformation work, we'll start to see more of these scholars moving into the higher grades with higher performance, having experienced stronger instruction, better materials, more consistent staffing, on and on and on, and even, you know, our strong start.
Same sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? So I want to thank Dr., I want to thank Mrs. Blackshear for her support with this data, of course, the entire team for all of the kind of gathering of information and observations and supports to... and supports to, to address the data as it exists. Just kind of overarching final comments on this, you know, we expected to see a difference in performance from the start of last year to the start of this year, given what our scholars experienced last year. And I, I don't think I'm overstepping to say that we're, we're also really expecting and looking forward to the acceleration of performance, increased performance over the course of the year. We're continuing to sharpen our tools and our minds around what it means, what, what the standards call for and what scholar misconceptions look like early on and addressing them pretty quickly. You've heard me say before, but I'm absolutely starting to see in more and more of our schools, the, the first teaching, the first time that skills and concepts are being taught is getting stronger and stronger. And so, you're starting to find more scholars, or we should find more scholars, learning those concepts early on and needing less intervention over time, which means we can then continue to build on and go to the next standards and skills and utilizing, you know, more of the year for more of those skills to find ourselves in a better position when it's time to test next time and even on the state test. Last thing I'll say, and we didn't really, really focus in on all of the partnerships that we have. We shared previously, and I think y'all have seen some of the evidences of conversations around data and the specific strategies and supports that our many lead partners are providing, supports that they're providing to our schools. The team has been working so, so closely with those lead partners to ensure that those investments that y'all have approved and that we're making, that we actually see the return on those investments. And we've already had some really tough, not tough, some very real conversations with our partners about what we're seeing and what pivots need to happen such that as we continue to get this data, that we're seeing the kinds of accelerated improvements that we'd expect. So, just again, want to thank the team for all the work and preparation here and all the continued daily work to make the goals that we're setting come true. Thank you, Mrs. Blackshear. And then lastly, folks, if you're like me, you are looking forward to spending a little time with family next week for Thanksgiving. So, while I'm excited about eating some turkey and dressing, I'm also very, very thankful for all of our Jackson Public Schools scholars, our team members, our engaged parents, community, partners, and of course, our board members. I'm truly thankful for this opportunity to continue to serve our scholars and families. And I hope that each of you board members, to each of our team members and those who are listening in, that you'll take the time to reflect on and acknowledge all that you're thankful for. Just as a reminder to all those who are listening, our schools and offices will be closed next week, November the 22nd through the 26th for the Thanksgiving holiday. We hope that everyone will enjoy their break. Dr. Seback, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Green, and thank you for the really thorough report, Dr. Blackshear. It was, it's always good to get the data, and I know the board member really, board members enjoy getting this and receiving the reports. With that, we do have two board reports, just two announcements. The first, I'll make the first one, but I'm going to cue Ms. Hilliard because she is going to share an award that the board recently won. The first one is, board members, it is that time of year, superintendent's evaluation is coming. So, I had a chance to connect with Attorney Turner prior to the board meeting, and so she'll be sent, we'll get together to send out the materials and a timetable for engagement over the next four to six weeks so we can wrap it up before the December holiday. So, that's just the first update. And Ms. Hilliard, I'll turn it over to you to share the good news.
Okay. I'm having public comments.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to ask you and Dr. Green to come down here so we can make this outstanding presentation.
I'll follow you. And before we do this, real quick, Attorney Turner wisely notified me that we do not have anyone who signed up for public comment. I missed that on the agenda. Again, I just want to remind the public that the board does value its input, and anyone who would like to make comments should email Ms. Rosalyn Williams at roswilliams@jackson.k12.ms.us no later than 4:00 PM on the day of the board meeting. Thank you, Attorney Turner, for having our back. And with that, we'll move on to the ceremony.
I take great pride in presenting this award that the district, the school board, won. It's an attendance award, and it reads, this 2020-21, this document certifies that the Jackson Public School District has earned distinction of board merit. A board whose members have been diligent in accessing opportunities to refine their school governance skills through continuing education training provided by the Mississippi School Board Association, presented this day, November the 16th, 2021. Denoteess Jackson, Executive Director of the Mississippi School Board Association. Leroy Matthew, President of Mississippi School Board Association. So, this is the award that we won today. And also, I'd like to say that we got a very outstanding shout-out today from the auditor, the Mississippi State Auditor. And the shout-out involved the JROTC and the fact that 100% of the members in that group graduated. And of course, we got a real big ovation. So, you can give them an ovation also. We think that is very, very, and compliments came from many of the persons who were in attendance. So, we're pleased to present this to you.
And board members, I asked Ms. Hilliard to present that award tonight because as we all know, you know, the, the award recognizes the amount of hours a board puts into training. And if it wasn't for the hours Ms. Hilliard put in, we would not have been recognized. So, Ms. Hilliard, we just want to recognize. I also, I also want to point out, you know, Ms. Hilliard also served on the board of the Mississippi School Board Association. That was last year. And it's, you know, I'll, I'll just say from a personal perspective, it's nice to be recognized as a board. It's nice to have a board member in those spaces that gets recognition for Jackson Public Schools. And so, just want to thank you for all of your leadership there, how you have always represented JPS.
Thank you. And of course, you know, whatever we can do for Jackson Public Schools, that's what all of us are here for. Ms. Thompson was in attendance today, and Ms. Johnson was on.
Virtually.
Virtual. Anybody else virtual? Okay. And Dr. Harrison came yesterday afternoon. Yeah.
Thanks, Ms. Hill. And we left the award with Dr. Green. Dr. Green, I'm wondering, maybe this is the boardroom, maybe we could, we could put it on the wall and use it as inspiration for the future as well.
Absolutely. I've got to find a space for all of the awards that the board is going to be earning.
All right.
So, indeed.
Well, thank you. All right, well, we will move on now to our agenda. We have information-only items. And so, the first is a review of the agreement between Mississippi State University on behalf of the TK Martin Center for Technology and Disabilities in the Jackson Public School District. Dr. Bingham Gibbs will present the information.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Board members, Board President, Dr. Green. The Office of Exceptional Education Services is submitting for review the contractual agreement between Jackson Public School District and the TK Martin Center for Technology and Disability. The TK Martin Center for Technology and Disability shall provide assistive technology evaluations for scholars and trainings for staff. The evaluation matches an individual with the appropriate equipment, software, and strategies. Our scholars will use this technology to learn, organize, and communicate information in a way that allows them to meet their goals.
Thank you, Dr. Bingham Gibbs. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, next, we have a review of the agreement between Van Robotics Robot in the Jackson Public School District, and Dr. Grigsby will present this information.
Good evening, Board President Seback, Dr. Green, board members, JPS friends and family. The administration is bringing forth for information-only a review of agreement between Van Robotics and Jackson Public School District. Our recommendation is for Oak Forest Elementary to participate in a cost-free pilot of the IB tutoring robot. Our rationale is to live out our commitment number two, innovative teaching and learning. As a result, the team at Oak Forest would receive four robots to pilot between 44th and 5th grade scholars as a tutorial device to improve math skills and overall student performance in math. One robot will be utilized per 10 children over a four-week period. The evaluation tool that we'll use will be the STAR Math Assessment. If the results are favorable, we would utilize this intervention throughout the entire 4th and 5th grade levels as Tier Two intervention. Title I funds would support programming if it's successful. However, at this time, there's no monetary commitment for the district during the trial period and no commitment if we choose not to purchase the robot. That's all I have. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Grigsby. Board members, any questions?
I am a little curious about what this robot looks like.
It is a robot probably about two feet high, and much like the computer-based programming that they have in schools, the robot actually interacts with them, talks with them as they're receiving math intervention. So, it's a fun, creative way, something that would excite them to receive intervention.
Oh, interesting.
All right, well, if there are no other questions or comments, thank you, Dr. Grigsby.
Thank you.
Next, we have a review of the agreement between Operation Shoestring and the Jackson Public School District, and this is Dr. Felton Moss, our Executive Director of the Office of Innovative Strategy.
Good evening, Superintendent Green, President Seback, board members and guests. The Jackson Public School District Administration recommends the review of the project agreement with Operation Shoestring to provide after-school-related activities to ensure students have selected students at several schools within the district have access to additional after-school programming. They include, but not, but are not limited to Galloway Elementary School, Walton Elementary School, and all the district high schools. A team of stakeholders have reviewed the agreement to ensure that it aligns with our mission, vision, and goals in the school district. Want to signal for you all that Operation Shoestring has been a long partner of Jackson Public School District. This agreement would extend that partnership. In addition to that, this agreement would allow us to provide transportation services to bus 140 students over to Operation Shoestring, also be able to provide them with meals. Like many of our, unlike many of our after-school programs, we don't have to fund this work and pay for their staff and all of that support. So, we're very much so thankful for Operation Shoestring and them willing to do this for us. So, we recommend this to the board for approval. Well, not today, it's actually inflection, but approval eventually.
All right, thank you, Dr. Moss. Board members, are there any questions? Thank you. All right, next, we will move on. It's, it's, it is the monthly financial report. Oh, wait, I'm jumping, I'm getting missed up here. The policy amendments. So, we'll go to, we'll have Attorney Moore join us, our Deputy General Counsel. She will walk us through a number of policy amendment recommendations.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Seback, board members, Dr. Green.
Good evening.
The Office of the General Counsel is bringing for information-only recommendations for amendments for the following policies. DEGD, damage or loss charges. The Office of the Chief Operations Officer recommends, and the Office of the General Counsel supports the recommendation, to amend this policy to change the responsibility from individual principals and school administrators to align with other district policies. EB, Building and Grounds Management. We're bringing this policy to recommend amending it to change the responsibility again to operations to maintain the cleanliness and operations of our district buildings. EBD, Long Range Maintenance of Buildings and Grounds. We're recommending amendment to this policy to implement a management system for the overall prioritization and management of maintenance performed within the district. ED, Child Nutrition Services Management. We amended the title of this policy to reflect the name of the department. And EI, Utility Management. This amendment was to indicate that the district is moving towards conservation of all utilities and not just energy. Any questions?
Thank you, Attorney Moore. Board members, are there any questions? Okay, hearing done. Thank you, Attorney Moore.
I'm next.
You are next. Thank you for keeping, keeping me going. Please, if you could walk us through a request for approval of the agreement between Identity Theft Guard Solutions, IDX, and the Jackson Public School District.
Yes. The Office of the General Counsel, Risk Management, is presenting to the board for review and approval of an agreement with Identity Theft Guard Solutions, IDX, to provide data breach notification to affected district employees for three months with the option of identity monitoring services for one year in response to cyber issue.
Thank you, Attorney Moore. Board members, are there any questions about this request?
Just, I have one, just so that we're clear. This is in relation to past issues, nothing.
Correct. This is in relation to a past issue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions, we'll take a motion to approve the agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Was it Dr. Luckett? Okay, Dr. Luckett moved, Ms. Johnson seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any names? The motion is. The motion is carried. Next, we have the approval of the Memorandum of Understanding between Bellhaven University and the Jackson Public School District. Ms. Marshall Thomas, our Assistant Superintendent for the High School Division, will present this information.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Seback, Board members, Dr. Green. The administration recommends the approval of the Memorandum of Understanding between Bellhaven University and Jackson Public Schools. Bellhaven University and Jackson Public Schools desire to develop mutually beneficial programs and partnerships that will enhance the learning qualities and educational opportunities of the scholars in JPS and as a resident of Jackson. The partnership includes a guaranteed minimum 40% tuition scholarship to all JPS high school graduates who are accepted for admissions to Bellhaven, eligibility for scholars to receive additional scholarships, work with all accepted students to receive the best and most comprehensive financial package, and that also includes direct aid from Bellhaven, federal grants and loans, the state of Mississippi grants, and any outside scholarships that are available, as well as JPS students who qualify will also receive a free application waiver. You have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Marshall Thomas. Board members, are there any questions? So I am going to ask a question on this one, and you know what I'm going to ask?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So first of all, it's exciting to see the interest in partnership from Bellhaven University. Want to lift that up. You know, whenever we see interest in our scholars, that's, I think that's a signal of the work that's being done throughout the district. And, you know, Bellhaven University, it's an expensive university relative to other options. And so, you know, it's, it's at the posted price on the internet, and I know there's always going to be fluctuation or there's different packages. It's about my, by what I see, it's about twice the cost of Jackson State, one and a half times the cost of two other local alternatives, and those are the only two I looked at. So is there an opportunity to, you know, try to be on par with those options? And I'm thinking of student loans and, you know, the return on the other side. So it's not about turning this down, but it's also just thinking about the long-term financial prospects of our students as well.
And so, Dr. Woods is actually here as well. So we've talked and we've discussed a lot about ensuring that our students are receiving a comprehensive financial package. So that may include the 40% scholarship waiver or scholarship. Also, in addition to grants, are there any other aids that Bellhaven could offer? For example, any housing aid that may be available for students who are interested? Are there any book stipends that may be available to help decrease the amount? Bellhaven is a private university, and as you know, private universities are generally a little higher because they don't receive any, any state funding. So as we continue to work on this partnership, as the scholarship amount increases, we'll definitely come back with a revised MOU to help support that. But they have committed to ensure that our students are receiving a comprehensive package that includes not only just the 40% scholarship, but other aids that are available to our scholars.
Great.
That's in writing?
Ma'am?
Is that in writing?
Yes, it is.
That's what we're being asked to approve.
It's actually in their MOU.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ms. Marshall Thomas, would you speak to, because I think it's relevant to this conversation, would you speak to efforts that are happening at the high school level to support our young people in garnering additional...
Experiences.
Well, and scholarship funding, right? As we think about, you know, to Dr. Seback's point, how we better prepare our scholars and help them to be more, to be more competitive for slots at schools, also competitive for scholarships. You want to, I don't know if there's anything there you want to lift up?
Right. So, Dr. Seback, there are a lot of scholarships that are available to minority students. And so what we've seen is our students just have not gone out and applied for those opportunities. So one thing that we've purchased is major clarity. And major clarity allows us to seek out scholarships that are available to not just minority students, but students across the board. And what we do is we upload these scholarships weekly to our, to the platform, and it goes directly as a notification to our scholars. And our scholars can apply right there on the platform, and it goes directly back to whatever entity it is. Inside of our college and career readiness courses, which is a required course this year, that is a requirement. All students are required to complete at least five scholarship applications over the course of the year. That's, so that's, that's a standard inside of the curriculum. So as we are seeing more students gain confidence and applying for scholarships, what we're actually seeing is many of them are going well above the five minimum scholarship requirements. And if they're noticing, oftentimes they thought that, you know, you had to have the 3.5 GPA, the high ACT scores, but in essence, there are a lot of scholarships that are available to minority students just based on being just a, you know, an ordinary student. And so as they're getting those, we are more confident that we will begin to see our students venture out to their non-traditional college choices. And so that's one thing that we're seeing too. We've been tracking our data, and we're seeing that a lot of our students are applying to very few different types of schools, specifically PWIs. Our students are not, our enrollment there is very, very low. So as a district, we've been committing ourselves to providing access to those, not just saying that you have to go, but ensuring that they, that they have access to attend those if they choose.
That's really helpful. And that's actually, it's educational for me, too.
Ms. Thomas, I know that one of the, one of the things that minority students traditionally have a problem with, and that is writing the essays that are required.
Yes.
When they see that, a lot of times, they will not apply for scholarships because they don't want to write essays. So somehow, we can get that, you know, going.
So in the course, in the college and career readiness course, that's one of the standards, that they actually help students write essays around scholarships. And they're general essays that can be tweaked to apply to, you know, to various situations. You know, sometimes they talk about, you know, why the scholarship is important to you. Some of the essays require them to talk about the impact it would have on your future goals and, you know, how does a scholarship, you know, fit in. So what we do is we try to help the students start creating generic essays that they can always go in and tweak and apply very easily.
So I also, so I hope that this also increases our applications to four-year colleges instead of the two-year colleges.
Yes, ma'am, yes. That is our goal. We are, if you notice, we, well, you don't know, but we have a collegiate council that we've started this year. And as part of the collegiate council, all seven of the public IHLs are a member on the council. We meet once a month, and our goal is to provide access. Oftentimes, a lot of our students are choosing two-year colleges out of comfort, and it's not a financial decision that, you know, the reason that they're choosing those two-year colleges. So as we are working with our students, you know, we're providing them with full array of information. So as the colleges are working with them, you know, they're going to, they're going to lay it out for them. This is your four-year matriculation at this cost with these aids available. And imagine sharing that type of information with a parent versus, you know, just saying, well, Hines is, a two-year college is more reasonable. So students are walking away with understanding that, hey, I can get a four-year college education with similar costs with these aids that are available.
That's good. That's really good.
I need to see you.
Do we need to recess, Ms. Hilliard? All right, Board members. It was very exciting, Ms. Marshall Thomas. Thank you for the, for the very thorough report and for all the answers to our questions. Okay, Board members, is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
I still move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Ms. Figures has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Next, we have the approval to amend the resolution of the Jackson Public School District requesting the Department of Finance and Administration to adopt a resolution to declare the necessity of issuance of state general obligation bonds. And Ms. Margaret Purnell, our interim Chief Financial Officer, will present this information.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Seback, the Board members, Dr. Green, colleagues. Today, well, first of all, let me state, I think that, not I think, we have, this has been presented to the Board previously. This was brought to the Board in July of 2021 concerning the CDC GO bonds that we have. Today, we are asking just to amend this request, and only because of the completion date. So the administration is requesting the Board to approve an amended resolution, requesting that the Mississippi Department of Finance and Administration adopts the resolution declaring the necessity for the issuance of the state general obligation bonds for repairs, renovations, furnishing, equipping, and upgrades at the Career Development Center. And also, you may remember that this, these GO bonds are going to be valued at $250,000 for the, for these renovations at CDC.
Thank you, Ms. Purnell. Board members, are there any questions? I'll just make one comment, that this was initiated by Representative Alice Clark, and we want to always make sure that when our representatives are continuing, and we do, we have a delegation that loves Jackson Public Schools and looks out for us. And so just want to lift up her work to, to include this money from the state legislature to support the work at the Career Development Center. Okay, Board members, is there a motion to approve the amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved, Ms. Hilliard seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have the request to approve the monthly financial report for the end of October 2021.
Okay.
Ms. Purnell.
Okay. Board President, Dr. Seback, Board members, Dr. Green, colleagues. The administration recommends that the Board approves the monthly financial report for the month of October 31st of 2021. The monthly financial report contains a statement of fund balance, the budget staff report, the bank reconciliation report, and the cash flow report. There are just a few highlights that we will, the administration will highlight, that we'll discuss tonight, and that is the district maintenance of fund balance, as you will review on page three of eight. Our annual fund balance as of October 30th of this year is roughly about $5 million as compared to $9 million this time last year. This is approximately about a 25% decrease at the current time from last year. And as we all know, that last year, we were virtual versus this year, we are in person. So our utilities and different other consulting fees and with our students and our expenditures, they are on an increase as compared to last year when we didn't have those expenditures going through. Child nutrition is always, has a significant balance, which continue to operate as a positive as always. Title I, of course, will have a negative balance due to our drawdown request through the Mississippi Department of Education. And the limited tax note is due to our Avalon collection. So when those collections come in, of course, our balances, our fund balance will increase and show positive at that time. The budget staffs report, as we were stating there, the district here, currently, we are showing a 19.09% of our revenue that has been collected as of October 31st of this year as compared to 20.33% as of last year. So it's a slight decrease at this point. Expenditures, 26.94 has been expended as of October compared to 25.67 compared as of last year at this same time. All of our bank reconciliations have been reconciled in a timely manner as of September 30th of 2021. Our cash flow report shows an ending balance of roughly about 2.2 as compared to 2.5 at the same time last year. Expenditures are slightly up a little bit at 18.9 as compared to 16.6 of this time last year, and our revenue collections are at 16.5 this year as compared to 17.3. Also, today, the district did close on the tax anticipation note with trust mark, so that has been finalized, and we should be seeing those funds deposited into the account either tonight or first thing in the morning. So that's a good thing also that we have that I want to know on dealing with the cash flow. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Purnell. Any questions, Board members? Okay, hearing done. Is there a motion to approve the information? Action item.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved, Ms. Hilliard seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda item. Thank you, Ms. Purnell. We have the consent agenda item for finance. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the Board previously, and we have had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, Board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda item for finance?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Johnson has moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda item for personnel. All consent agenda items have been reviewed by the Board previously, and we have had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, Board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items for personnel?
I still move.
Did I go out of order again? No? Okay.
I think so. Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Dr. Luckett has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 There being, any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Is there, there is no consideration for executive session. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Johnson has moved, Ms. Figures has seconded, it was Mrs. Thompson, thank you. Mrs. Thompson has moved, Ms. Figures has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. We will now take a short break as we prepare for the boardwork session around the comprehensive land use study. Thank you, everyone.
Good meeting, folks.